... o'clock, so I will call to order the second monthly meeting of the Hendersonville City Council, October 22nd, 2025. We have an agenda before us, council. What are your preferences?
Madam Mayor, I move that City Council approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Not those in favor of approving the agenda as presented? Aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no? As have it. We have our agenda. One item of new business, approval of a letter regarding Safe Streets.
So, mayor vote, members of City Council, I will start and I will turn it over to Mayor Protem Hensley. The, our MPO, French Product MPO, has been working on Safe Streets for Western North Carolina Plan. I included it in your agenda packet. And they've asked for a letter of commitment from all of their membership organizations, local governments, saying that we will support the plan and help work toward implementing in our communities. And so we have drafted a letter that will be on your letterhead for the mayor to sign. But it felt like it'd be appropriate to have the council formally approve the letter of commitment, so you're aware of the plan itself. And we will submit that back to the MPO. I don't know if Mayor Protem has anything else she wants to add to that.
No, it's just really important that we all adopt these resolutions for the Safer Streets Plan, and it does help with federal funding overall. So, I just appreciate everybody's support.
You going to make a motion?
Sure. I move the City Council approve the letter of commitment for Safe Streets for WNC Plan.
Is there any discussion? Not? Those in favor of the letter of commitment, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, say no? As have it. Motion carries. Get that taken care of. Right, presentations. Number one, Hands On. And here is Brent Knight.
Good afternoon, honorable members of the Hendersonville City Council. My name is Joseph Knight, and I have the privilege of serving as the director and CEO of Hands On Children's Museum. I'm here today to share an exciting recognition that shines a national spotlight on the incredible public-private partnership between Hands On and the city of Hendersonville. One that began five years ago with the creation of the People's Museum, the Walk of Fame, and the overall expansion and renovation of Hands On Children's Museum. Since its inception in 2020 and opening in 2022, the People's Museum, the Walk of Fame, a free community exhibition, has become a cherished and sacred part of our community. The museum celebrates the rich history and culture of the people of Hendersonville, helping both children and adults gain a deeper understanding of themselves and the cultural and historical significance of their community. In the immediate aftermath of Hurricane Helene, Hands On opened its doors for free, of charge, to thousands of people for an entire month. And the work that we did during that time was recognized by the Association of Science and Technology Centers. For the first two weeks, Hands On remained open 12 hours a day, and the museum that was usually full of joy and laughter of children learning and playing turned into a special place of refuge for members of our community. During that time, for the first few weeks, we were open nearly every day. And the People's Museum, the Walk of Fame in particular, became a vital distribution hub for shelf-stable food, baby formula, clothing, toys, and other essentials. The museum served hundreds of meals provided by World Central Kitchen and partnered with local health professionals to offer free and acute medical care and mental health support. By day three of the crisis, the museum had secured Starlink Satellite Internet, providing thousands of people with free connectivity. Families reconnected with loved ones. First responders coordinated helicopter rescues, and business owners managed critical operations, often within the walls of the museum. Looking back on everything that we did during that time, it was incredible to see that the museum, which traditionally is focused on meeting the educational and social emotional development needs of children, transformed into a one-stop shop for vital resources. Many of the same families that would come to the museum to learn and play sought out the museum as a place of refuge during a very uncertain time. Many grandparents would bring their grandchildren to the museum, sought out Hands On as a resource to reconnect with their adult children and their family members. During the immediate crisis, Hands On served over 4,000 individuals, provided over 1,200 hot meals, and distributed over 6,000 square feet of supplies to Hendersonville residents. And in the months that followed, we continued to offer these free resources and support to thousands more. Our response during this unprecedented time was recognized by the National Association of Science and Technology Centers, which awarded Hands On the prestigious Roy L. Schaefer Leading Edge Award, one of the highest honors that a children's museum or science center can receive in the United States. Our work in Hendersonville is now a model for how museums can respond in times of disaster in communities both large and small. This award and the impact we made would not have been possible without the support of the City Council. The steadfast support of our council is a beautiful example of what happened, of what can happen when public and private partnerships blossom and thrive within the community. The support from the council empowered us to act swiftly and effectively when our community needed us most. And without that support, many needs within our community would have gone unmet during that time. As Hands On celebrates its 18th anniversary this fall, we invite the city of Hendersonville to join us in celebrating this national recognition. This recognition reflects what can be achieved when local government and a nonprofit children's museum work together to enhance the quality of life for all citizens. So if that's said, I would just like to thank the city for their ongoing support of Hands On and the People's Museum of Walk of Fame, and do know that the work that this community did has been admired by many throughout this state, well, throughout this state and through the country. So, thank you very much, Hendersonville City Council, and happy to answer any questions you may have about Hands On in general.
Comments? Congratulations.
Thank you. And I did bring the award with me that we received. It was given to us at the annual conference in California, and would love to do a group picture with the council, if that's okay?
All right, everybody. One, two. One, two. Congrats.
All right. Next, presentation from Immaculata Catholic School.
So, last year, our fall festival for Immaculata Catholic School was slated for two days after the hurricane, and obviously, we had to reschedule it. And so, this year, they wanted, the school and the diocese in Charlotte wanted to honor all the partners in the community who they felt like really helped with the response. And so, the city of Hendersonville was awarded a plaque from Immaculata Stars. It's called the Helene Hero Award. And, but basically, it just says an appreciation for your selfless dedication and assistance in helping Immaculata Catholic School operate as a distribution center and a beacon of hope during the aftermath of Hurricane Helene. And then, they also sent a bunch of the children, wrote letters to city staff thanking everybody for all of their help, and they're very sweet cards and letters. So, I just brought all of these in. But I wanted to give this to the staff because you guys sacrificed countless hours and time with your families, and many of you had your own personal tragedies going on at home and still were able to commit to the city. And it was just a wonderful response, and the community is very, very lucky to have such a wonderful staff here. And so, anyway, I just wanted to be able to pass this along. It's been on my kitchen table for about a week, so there's probably food and spilled on some of the letters, but they're really sweet letters. And, so.
Thank you very much. I'll share this with the staff. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you for bringing that. All right. Next, Whitmire Activity Center, Patton Park, repair.
Good morning, mayor, council. So, I'm here to talk about the Whitmire Center in Toms Park, just to give you an update on where things are. And I also wanted to note that Katie Feller from CPL, Bill Weaver from Water Technology Inc., and Emily Burr Douglas from Withers Ravinell, all part of the design team are on Zoom. So, if something that I can't answer, or you have a specific question, they are available. How'd we get here? Just very briefly, kind of the concept project was introduced to you at your February 28th retreat slash meeting. We've had several stakeholder meetings throughout the process, had a community engagement meeting, two community engagement meetings, one on May 19th and one on July 15th. Both of those were at the library, both pretty well-attended. Had an online survey that was actually only open for about 11 days, and we had almost 1,200 total participants and over 500 City of Hendersonville participants. There was a presentation at your September workshop, September 24th workshop, and I'm just going to give you kind of a brief update of where we are since then. So, just to kind of rehash, these are the existing conditions at Whitmire Activity Center in Toms Park. I don't need to go into the specifics there, but on the right-hand side of the screen are the estimated costs to repair the facility, 4.3 million, and the cost to replace. And if you recall, the replacement would be if we would shift the building footprint and raise things up so as to prevent the building from flooding again during a significant flood event or rain event. Patton Park, this existing layout, aerial photography, 18 acres, I guess I'll highlight 47,000 square feet of pool facilities, which includes 7,000 square feet of support buildings. Do you want to note that the existing pool is about 12,000 square feet? The estimated cost to repair the facility is almost 9 million, 8.9. And the estimated cost to replace, which very similar to Whitmire, would be kind of raising things up out of the floodplain, that would run around 18 million. Again, these are all construction costs, do not include soft costs and engineering and things like that. So, from that, we got some feedback from you all, and I'll go through some of the highlights of that. And so, the design team has come back with some concepts based on that feedback, and they are still working on a, we've got a third-party estimator that's working on refining each of these, or refining costs for each of these. We don't have those available yet. We'll be bringing those to you in the next couple of weeks. So, the Whitmire Center, Whitmire Activity Center and Park, Boyd's Park, or Boyd Park, includes, as you can see on there, the A Community Center. It's about the same size as the existing facility, about 8,200 feet, square feet, seven shuffleboard courts, and a park playground that kind of incorporates natural play features, basically that can be flood-resilient. So, that, the area, if this thing is working, so this area up here, you know where the park is, the whole idea of this would be to build this area in a way so this area, the park, the Activity Center and the shuffleboard courts would not flood, and we would widen the floodplain here and allow any park space and play items along the creek to be built in a way that would, that could be flooded, if you will. So, this consists of, as I said, seven shuffleboard courts, Community Center, interactive creek elements, parking, slightly reduced parking, I think we went from 50 to 38 parking spaces, high retention area, a slough, which is stormwater feature, and as I mentioned, the flexible open lawn with natural interactive play elements. Stop me at any time if you have any questions. The Community Center layout includes flexible space. Again, this is 8,300 square feet, so it's very similar size to the existing building. Flexible recreation space is that large area, the A, multipurpose rooms, warming kitchens, some staff areas, lobby, exterior restrooms here, so these can be accessed outside for folks using the shuffleboard courts or just general park users or trail users. You recall this facility is pretty close to the Acoustic Trail, so we could have folks wandering over from the trail. And obviously, interior restrooms. Flipping over to Patton Park. It's a 50-meter pool is the big takeaway, 50-meter indoor pool, so you can see that down here. There's an outdoor pool as well. A couple of the takeaways here, the parking area is significantly increased from the existing, I think there's 145 out there now, going to 210. In order to do that, the existing skate park would have to be shifted, and the concept would be to have kind of a skate park slash pump track that could be kind of dual-use. This is a photo taken from a site in Georgia, I believe. And existing, we keep the existing basketball, or keep basketball courts, pickleball. Just kind of scrolling through. And this is, this is a flexible, open space. Obviously, could, you know, a dog park, something like that, could be incorporated in some of these areas. So, the interior, the aquatic facility, 50-meter indoor pool and deck, some classrooms and meat management, the purplish-pink are restrooms and lockers. So, the restroom, these restrooms are open to the outdoor pool area, so that, and would include lockers. This is a concession area. And one thing to note here, if you recall some of the other options that were looked at, at the last workshop meeting, the mechanical, chemical space or room would have to be located below the structure in a basement by reducing the footprint of the building and eliminating the warm water pool, which was shown on both of the previous concepts that were presented in September, were able to, the design team is able to have kind of an at-grade mechanical, chemical room that would be A, cheaper, and B, probably be slightly more accessible to staff. Just in general, here's the aquatic layout. As I mentioned, the, our existing pool is about 12,000 square feet. Bill's available, Bill Weaver's available online if you have any specific questions in the pool layout. This is 50-meter competition pool with the outdoor facility. You recall, one of the things that we took away from some of our, some of the feedback that we got over the last few weeks was to kind of simplify the outdoor pool and make it available for open swim with zero entry and splash features. And the, these orange areas would be kind of awning or shelter-type areas to provide some shade. And here's a summary of the two facilities. So, this is everything that I just went through with the listing of the features. And as I mentioned, we don't have costs for these yet, but we hope to within the next week or two. With that, happy to answer any questions. And like I said, the members of the design team are online if you have any specific questions.
Brent, I have a question.
Yes.
In the proposal, in the proposal that we're giving to us as far as the cost, would this include maintenance as well, or would that be separate?
No. Operation and maintenance of these facilities would be, is something that we've thought about, and it would obviously be much more, I don't want to say, there would be many more operation-maintenance requirements, or in particular, not necessarily Whitmire, but Patton with an indoor facility would be much more operation-intensive than what we have, currently have experienced with the outdoor pool.
Thank you. Let's talk about, rather than jumping back and forth, let's talk about Whitmire and Toms Park first. Opinions? Thoughts?
Did we figure out exactly how many shuffleboard courts are needed to conduct the events that the Shuffleboard Club has been having or hosting?
So, it's my understanding from the national events that they host, which are, I want to say maybe three weekends out of the year, they need 14 courts, which is what we currently have. Obviously, this concept is showing seven, and the reason for that is it's impossible to, it's impossible to incorporate flood mitigation measures and keep all of the features that are out there currently. So, the building, as shown, is about the same size as what we have currently, and it's, on this screen, it's been shifted. So, basically, it's been shifted out of the floodplain, and obviously, we would also have to do some grading on-site. And since it's shifted, we, it's kind of shifted into the space where the shuffleboard courts are. So, in order to do that, and keep some shuffleboard courts, we have to shift the shuffleboard courts up towards Allen, and we just don't, there's not enough space to fit the 14 courts and to be able to do the flood mitigation measures. Honestly, if, if, if we don't, we'd have the potential of having a hard time getting a no-rise permit to build all the facilities on the site. And a no-rise permit is basically something that you would have to get in order to prove that you are not causing a rise to the floodplain elevation on your property and obviously the surrounding properties.
How many parking spots are at Whitmire now?
I want to say 50. I think that was, they actually had that. Yep, 50.
And do we need the same square footage building? It's, I mean, that building, I think, has been heavily underutilized for many, many years, and it seems like a relatively large building to me with, I think, quite a bit of wasted space. Is it possible to condense it down, make more functional space, and then be able to have more of the shuffleboard on the outside?
We could definitely look into that. We were trying to keep, you know, I mentioned all the, kind of the public input meetings and the survey that we had, we were trying to incorporate as much of that feedback as we could. And one of the big things that we heard was having a, kind of a flexible space, a larger flexible space that could be used for bridge, could be used for community events, potentially wedding receptions, you know, things like that, parties, which we, which, you know, this size site, Katie, I don't know if you want to jump in? I don't remember offhand how large the Area A here is in comparison to what we currently have.
I think my concern is that, oh, I'm sorry. You were asking.
Go ahead.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay. So, the space that we're showing for A is just about 200 square feet over the current space that Bridge is held in now, but it's very similar in size. And then, the layout would be able to accommodate the Bridge, and like you said, it could be for events or party spaces. The difference between this layout, the building layout from this example compared to what we presented back in September, we did cut back on some of the spaces that we thought could be more multipurpose. So, for the B, the two multipurpose rooms, and then the A, that flexible recreation space, we're trying to consolidate a lot of what we think can happen there into these three types of zones based off of size. And then, as far as the surrounding spaces, that's really a lot of support areas. We have a staff space planned for about two people to sit within. And then, like Brent mentioned, we have restrooms on the say as well. So, I think if we want to provide the area for events and for Bridge and other, you know, community happenings, it would be tough to cut back much more than we have and still have kind of a functioning facility that'll still serve those same purposes.
And you said this space is already 200 square feet larger than the current one?
Uh, yes. So, I guess technically, yes, I could cut back those 200 square feet out of that large flex space. The reason why it was that much over was for being able to fit this, the certain sports within the space, pickleball courts.
Because, because we did add indoor, versatility, added some indoor pickleball courts. We would put it on the floor as a multipurpose room, so.
Right.
I mean. Out of that idea?
No. We're not fond of that idea?
Not.
Why not? I'd... Well, I think there is actually indoor pickleball already.
There is?
At the racket club? Don't they have indoor pickleball?
And I think the discussion really from councils would say is how flexible and how, how do you want the building to be used, right? Because we, we heard for a number of, we heard that it was underutilized, you wanted it to be more flexible, so, and community surveys and those kind of things. Because that's, we tried to make it a multipurpose facility that it not only could house what it was previously used for, but also additional recreational opportunities. But it really is, from a community center, what are your priorities based on what you heard or what you want in the building?
So, you would rather just...
Well, it seems to me that based on the folks who play pickleball, that's what it would turn into. They would want to be there all day, every day.
Or the folks who want to play Bridge will not want footballers in there. I guess my other question, I'm not opposed to a community center, but the space seems very large, and when you're saying, like, in order to host all the things that go on over there, well, there aren't anything that... well, there aren't anything that goes on over there except bridge, I think the Girl Scouts.
Girl Scouts would like to be back there.
Yeah, but what else do we host there? Like what other events in the last?
Just because we don't host things now doesn't mean we wouldn't add a new building.
Yeah, but what kind of things, like, would we do? Like in the last 15 years, would, have we hosted there?
I remember when I was at Apple Festival. Holding places there.
It's my understanding that we did host, use it for event space and the community used it up until about 10 years.
Yeah, a little bit more.
They used it for like birthday parties and key to eras.
Yeah, I think they. What stopped? Why did it stop 10 years ago? I mean, it's just, it's not been really being used for greater than 10 years. Do we know what was the catalyst for the reason we didn't have events?
I'd go ahead. Honestly, I think, sorry Nick, once we entered into the lease with the Bridge Club, that really limited the versatility of the building. Because about that time, give or take a little bit, the Bridge Club moved away from the Opportunity House into the Whitmire Center. And with the lease agreement and relocation of tables and things like that, it really, we started just, we stopped renting it like may have been in the past.
So would there be another lease with the Bridge Club if this building here is constructed?
Yet to be determined.
Okay.
So, and what that lease would look like. I think what we heard, the staff has heard from council is you would want it, the council wanted it much more versatile, much more open, not as restricted by one or two uses. And that's what, that's what we've taken away and tried to bring to you. But ultimately, if we need to think different, we'll be happy to do that. But that's, that's the product we tried to deliver for you.
I guess how do we get, how do we move forward with a space knowing that the majority of the space will, will likely be leased by a group who will want to have relative rights and access to the space?
From my perspective, again, I've tried to make it very clear to the Bridge Club that we would not go back into that full scenario that we had previously. That the council was not, I wasn't speaking for you, but my understanding was you were not interested in that. And that you wanted a much more versatile facility. And if they came back, it would be under different term, and different lease terms than it had previously been. Our understanding was you wanted it to be a community center and open to many groups and citizens on a regular basis. That was the message that we heard.
That is what I would like, yes.
Yeah, in, in the way past, there were exercise classes. People would rent it and do exercise classes in there. One of the things that it was used for.
Yeah, and keeping it a, a truly shared community space, like by all means, bless you, have special interest groups utilize it, but on a, on a fair basis. That is, I think, for us to determine, right, what that, what that lease would look like. That would be in our purview. Angie, yeah? To determine like what those future leases look like and what's, what fair, fair shared community use of those spaces would be. And leave it open some days for people to rent it, you know, make sure that it's open a couple of days a week for folks to use or on the weekends for families to have events there or whatever. My like vision for it.
I think we would see an uptick in people utilizing it once we had it open. There are people all the time on the internet asking about parties and. I mean, I like, I like this new layout. I think it handles everything that we wanted to handle. I mean.
What size is A again? What is the, how many square feet is A?
It's just about 3,400 square feet.
That's a large, that is a huge space, 3,400 square feet.
I mean, but we would.
Seems large to me, but.
We would fill it when we did our Christmas luncheons and stuff like that. And we could maybe put dividers in it, then maybe you have two people that can rent it on a weekend.
Yeah, that's it, I think in the, when we were talking through the design, it's, you know, it's drawn open so that it can be used for those larger events or for bridge or for, you know, pickle, open pickleball. But then there is the opportunity to put in movable dividers or anything like that where you can start to split up the space as well.
And obviously, we don't have to paint the pickleball courts on, I mean, that, that's, that's an easy button.
The mayor made a good point.
So it's, it's, that's, that's an easy button, that's an easy button, so.
Well, we could maybe cut out a little bit of space.
I don't know if I'm in, I don't know if that's going to get us. I don't think we're gaining anything by cutting out a little bit of space.
So let's.
How much money?
So, so two questions from staff. Is this about money or is it about 14 pickleball courts?
Shuffleboard.
Sorry, shuffleboard court.
Both.
So, so 200 square feet is more likely, Katie, or jump in here. I don't think 200 square feet is going to get you shuffle, the 14 shuffleboard courts.
We probably have to cut the building in half in order to get that.
The, the question that staff has kind of tossed around, I'll ask it at this point. And, and, and again, this is very fluid because we don't know what money we're going to get from FEMA at this point, right? That's still, we're still trying to work within that 4.6, 4.8 million dollar budget that, that we, the replacement cost is what we're trying to work under. But the question two is, I'm not sure exactly how this would work, but we bounced the idea that if you wanted to have 14 shuffleboard courts, is there another park that you can move the shuffleboard courts to another location? We'd have to, I don't know if it saves you any money because we'd probably have to construct bathrooms associated with those shuffleboard courts.
Probably a seating area.
Probably a seat, so, don't know if that saves you, but again, looking for ideas to get to the 14, so.
Yeah, I think basically, and you know, Emily can speak to this a little bit as well, but we, we can't really on this site have 14 shuffle, or we can't have 14 shuffleboard courts and a community center. So it's kind of, we need to either narrow it down to one or the, the other on this site or like you said, move to another site. And I think with the discussion, it's, it's, if we have, I guess, when it comes down to the money and, and you're saying with having to build restrooms on another site, it's also important to keep in mind, if you were to try to fit more on this site, you may not be receiving as, as much money because you're affecting that flooding to adjacent properties and you're not mitigating it as much as you need to within the site, if that makes sense. So yeah, I think really this, this sketch for us represents pretty much the most that we can fit on this site. If you want to include all the programs that we've spoke to. So if you do feel the need to bring it up to the 14 courts, then I don't really think that, I think it would probably just be the small restroom building that we showed in the previous iteration as far as built structures go.
I personally prefer a board like this. But I'm not in favor of compromising this building as a community center for the community as a whole for one interest group to have 14 shuffleboard courts. I don't think that that's our place.
Yeah, I just, my only thing is I feel bad about taking things away that were there before.
I know, I do too.
Like if you had it before and it was damaged from some cause that we couldn't be responsible for. And I feel bad to not return or restore what was originally there at a minimum. I guess I would like to know a little bit more about shuffleboard events, like can you have 10? Or can you have certain events with a certain number? Do the people on the Zoom know about shuffleboard? They're the park people?
I know as much as they do.
Oh, okay.
Which is more than you probably want to know.
I don't want to go that far, but intriguing, but yeah, the, it, like I said before, I, it's, it's my understanding that we've, our shuffleboard group has been hosting events. And in order to do that, they need the four, or 14 courts. And those events are considered national events.
You know, I've supported their being there all these years as far as their funding and all. But I find it hard to justify for two or three weeks in the year to have 14.
Yeah, I get it.
And I feel very bad about that. I'd love to be able to accommodate them, but I just, I just don't feel like.
And I think regardless of Helene, when we were to look at this building again, which we would have done, I think we'd be at the same crossroads. Because right now it seems like it's serving shuffleboard and it's serving bridge. And that was pretty much all it was serving, but it's whole city park. Although before Helene, we never had any idea what it looked like over there. How badly the flooding was.
Right. Staff have a better feel for where we think we want to go? Or you want something more definite?
No, I, if, I, I will tell you what I see. I see a consensus of this, what you see on the screen. We will not ask you to approve anything, any clear direction until we have cost estimates. I think that cost in this and Patton is still a huge unknown. But from a cost estimate, estimating and giving the design team some direction on kind of honing in on, on, on the project, this gives us direction for today so that they can take the next, continue to get the cost estimates and we can come back and get your final approval to, to move forward with one designer or not. Cause I think what we will ask, I don't want to, we will want to move forward, I think. If we can't move forward, if there's still some fact finding as we talk about the pool, we will ask you relatively quickly if we do have a consensus that can we go ahead and start with design on Whitmire to move. We don't have to take both projects at the same time, so.
Will we?
So it's still some time away. We're going to have cost estimates from, you want to take it farther?
The next step is to, the design team is working on basically a letter along with the estimates to supply to FEMA to describe what we have to do to bring the, the facility up to existing or current codes and standards and design standards. So they're working on that. Once we have that together, we're going to work with our FEMA consultant, iParametrics, and get that into FEMA. And hopefully, there's a, there's a program that we're looking at with FEMA where we might be able to get some information in a relatively quick manner. So we can basically get, have kind of an, an agreed upon amount that they would reimburse or that they would give us to get the facility back online. So we're, we're hoping that that's a several week process as opposed to several month process.
Are you waiting on stuff from us, design wise and like this type of stuff, to be able to move forward with that?
Yeah.
Okay. I just don't want to keep holding it up.
No, we'd have to come back to you all to approve a design contract and everything. So this, this gives us direction to be able to work with the design team to put together scope and everything for that.
Good step.
Right.
That was the easy one.
Do we want to flip to the hard one or?
Okay. Patent. And Melinda already heard my opinion, so I'll tell you the rest of you. A 50-meter indoor competition pool is not on my radar at all. It is something that, a lot of people think we need it, but I don't think it's up to the city to fund it. Even with partners. The, the more we get about it, it has to have seating of a certain quantity and it's, it's overwhelming for the city to do it. It should be a county project. I'd love to see that, I like the idea of the outdoor fun stuff. If we want a, another just neighborhood or, you know, family outdoor pool or family indoor pool, including some outdoor space. Fine, but I am a definite no on a competition pool. Can take it from there.
Just want to mention, if any of you have any specific aquatics questions that Bill Weaver from our design team can answer, we've only got him for about another 10 minutes, so he has a part of commitment that he has to leave for, so just want to mention that.
I think my, my concerns around the 50-meter are mostly, mostly but not entirely fiscal, knowing that a 25 meter, or 25-yard pool is sufficient for high schoolers to use. Which is the most urgent community need that I can think of. And then also knowing that the estimated difference is around $12 million, right? Is that approximately what we've said, 25 to 50?
For the, the larger versions that you all looked at before, I think it was close to, I think it was in the 30s to 50. The, the previous 50-meter that had the warm, warm water pool and the exterior pool was close to 50. And then.
As opposed to 30-ish for the, yeah.
25 yard.
It's a significant, significant amount when we have a lot of other community needs to me without. So, so funding partners would, would maybe sway me on that, but by and large, I agree with the mayor. Like warm water, yeah.
Yeah, so we have it, yeah, we, we, we don't have an estimate for this option, they're working on that. So we don't have an estimate of that. So you've got the 50, council member, as you mentioned, you mentioned the 25 yard. We introduced a concept that, I'll, I'll, I'll throw it on the table now just while we're in conversation with, with the council. We introduced the concept of the 25-yard stretch, which gave you the additional space with the bulkhead to have a diving well as well as some lap lanes that could serve as warm up and cool down for folks on the other side of the bulkhead. So that there, in addition to the 25 yard, there's the 25 stretch there that, that, and Bill can speak to that and if you want more questions about that, we introduced that concept this week to you, but, but we'll stand by for additional direction.
But my, my extremely unscientific survey of having any kind of a pool with just pool water for swim teams and lap swimming, my people I surveyed was my family. And they said, I said, would you, would you go and use it, you know, take, take, take grandkids there? No, if it's not warm enough to swim in. So if we are designing this for the swim teams and the lap swimmers and maybe a few very hardy kids, again. and maybe a few very hardy kids, again, no. I think it, I think what we should be providing is something for families to enjoy. Melinda?
The mayor did, she just tell me my feelings on that. And then after doing some brainstorming and I start figuring out, okay, maintenance. How often do shoes? I kind of maybe 50. But I, I, I like the idea of the 25 yard stretch. I also would like to see a retractable dome or something, but we just got to factor the cost in there. We've got to be good stewards of the taxpayers' money. And we all taxpayers, well.
We are. I have lots of thoughts now. I came in this meeting going, I know exactly what I want. And now I don't know. I do think having costs would be a whole lot more helpful. I don't hate the idea of entertaining the 25 yard stretch to see what the cost difference would be. I know that means a whole different building layout. But I would be interested in comparing those two things to see what it is. And I think for me, for initial build, I think partners are important, but the mayor and Melinda bring up a good point that partners probably aren't going to be paying for the maintenance. And so now we've saddled ourselves with all of that. So that is concerning.
It, it's primarily for the schools. And the county should, if the schools want it that badly, county should provide it.
You're not deciding.
Not us.
I don't agree that it's primarily for the schools. I think we have a very large number of swimmers in this community of all ages who do swim both recreationally and competitively. I also agree that it should not be the city of Hendersonville's sole, we should not be on the hook to provide a community pool for this entire county. But I am not giving up on getting partners at this point. And I feel like we have meetings scheduled in the near future to work on getting those partners. And so I am not ready to put like a definite on anything until we've exhausted every option to get the community to come together to do this because it's the right thing to do. I really think for the community. And so we need partners to help. And it shouldn't just be the city of Hendersonville on the hook. I completely agree with that. I do believe there's probably some sort of MOU that would happen as far as maintenance and upkeep. I wouldn't think just because we've built it in the city of Hendersonville city limits that it would just be us maintaining it. If we did gather partners, I would assume that there would be some sort of joint operational. In Boone and Watauga County, they have a joint operational kind of financial revenue stream that they use to maintain the pool. So I don't think that that would completely be on us either. But I'm just not ready to, to cut that out. I want to get more information and feel like if we have all the information and we've talked to all the partners and we've asked and pleaded and begged, and if we still cannot get people to help us, then we scale things back and do what we can afford to do and provide a good service for our community. But I'm not ready to give up at this point.
I mean, I think that's fair. I think if we've not talked to all of the partners, we need to. And if we're doing it, we might as well at least exhaust any way that we think we could do it all the way.
And, and we can, we could get the pricing for this and I would hope maybe at least a slag at, you know, if we reduce what you see on the screen there, Bill and Katie and to a 25 yard stretch, what a ballpark cost reduction would be there. Also, I just, let's be transparent at this point, at this point, as we, as we talk about partners and things. There would have to be, we would have to develop a revenue model to, for pool operation. Use of the indoor pool would not be totally free. Maybe even a sliding scale for, that, that model's out there, a sliding scale based on income would be something we would want to discuss and think about. Also, school system, it is currently leasing space from the YMCA. So there would be, you know, an expectation of leased space from the school system in the county. There's, I've had brief conversations about that. And so that's out there too, that there would have to be a cost share as it related to utilization of the pool. And we are going to meet with the YMCA. So I'll just put that out there to the public too, as we talk about a public pool. And, and to the mayor's point, there is, whatever we decide to do, there's been strong interest regarding having open swim space. So, so those are the, the competing interests there. So, but.
I thought it was interesting at the LGCCA, the swim group made a presentation and one of the comments was, well, they, they use the Y because it's cheaper. They can't afford Leila Patterson Center. So how much can they afford to put in to the extremely expensive maintenance that we're going to have? I think they, they have to be honest and not just say, oh, yeah, 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 we can do that. They've got to tell us how much they'd be willing. And I don't think it's going to be enough to cover our expenses.
Also been a months long conversation at this point. So I, I'm starting to feel like if there were partners in the woodworks, we might have some idea of them wanting to come forward and, and help out with this. But my day to day concern around this is, is kind of centered around what community use would look like if we went the 50 meter model and then had our only community pool being utilized by these competition events. Then the community doesn't have access to the singular pool that we have during those times too. So we're also.
And again, how, how frequently is this competition going to come up? Once a quarter?
Yeah, I don't.
Or what, who are we doing it for? Kind of like the shuffleboard courts. You know, we, for three, three weeks a year, we should put in 14 courts. Or half a dozen competitions a year, we should put in a 50 meter pool?
Well, the pool that we had that was our public pool and our community pool was being utilized for three months out of the year max. So we're not taking, by having a 50 meter pool and an outdoor pool, we are not taking anything away from the community that was not there before. We are actually expanding the service. And then the other thing is, lost my train of thought. It'll come back to me. We're talking about 50 meter and then the outdoor. It'll come back.
The amount of time the pool's going to be used.
Lost me. Gone. It'll come back hopefully.
Let's not forget parking. We have these events that will have to be shuttled in. Have a large event. Just a lot of things.
Oh, I know, I'm sorry. Okay. What was our revenue stream to maintain the pool that we had? And how far in the hole are we on the previous pool that we had? Do we have any numbers for that?
What was the specifics?
Were we breaking even on the outdoor patent?
No.
We were quite in the hole, right?
Yes.
Okay, just make sure I understood that it was not a financially.
It was not a money.
Lucrative business that we had previously and that we were subsidizing that pool.
Yes.
At a very high level, right?
So, sounds like, I don't want to move this along if I don't need to move it along, but sounds like there's still some information you want, from what I'm hearing. An estimate, the more estimates on this 50 meter option plus 25 stretch and then maybe staff can work with our consultants to start stabbing, taking a stab at operational cost as part of the calculus there, looking and continue our conversations with potential partners, particularly directly the county and the school system as it relates to that and the YMCA. So there's information I hear you want. And so a little more information here, little clearer, much more clear direction on Whitmire. And so we will, I would anticipate at least having Whitmire back on your agenda for November to, to get kind of a, if we, if we can do that in time, we may have to wait a little while, but we'll see. Anyway, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Right, strategic housing plan. Need places for all these people who want to swim.
Good afternoon. I thought parks were supposed to be fun. That was painful.
I take the fun out of everything.
Well, hopefully this will be fun. So we're here this afternoon. This is really a group effort by staff that have been working together on pulling together the, the components of a strategic housing plan to bring to you for adoption later on this year. And so I'm going to run through some of these steps. And we'll go into the history. Is someone controlling? Is it set up to go on its own? Hold on, this thing is crazy. Oh, wow. This is going to be interesting.
It's going to be great.
Well, this could be fun. So here's the outline that we're going to go through today and starting with the history. Most of you know this. Back in March, the committee was appointed by city council. This is going to be hard to do.
Matt, hold on a second. Matt, Al, say anyway, y'all can go in and take the transitions off so that he can.
We'll work on that.
Can we get a couple of quick minutes?
What happens when you use a presentation someone else built and, and modify it for this. But so, well, I will talk about the history. We can, we can wing it here. A strategic housing committee was appointed by city council. And that was really kicked off with the housing symposium when Shane Phillips came to town. A lot of excitement was generated through that. And then over, you know, there was these other highlights with the, the field trip to Chapel Hill, the, the triangle area. And so there's been this momentum throughout the assessments that were provided from DFI and the, and Bowen. And then, and then we really kind of hunkered down into some the council conversations that occurred last year. So we had that, that community engagement around this topic and the culmination and some staff working together on this topic. And so throughout that time period, our city attorney was working really closely with the steering committee folks and educating them on all the different range of issues underneath the umbrella of this, of this housing related topic. And so I think you're all familiar with that, but I really want to highlight that, that this has been a process as step by step to bring us to this point. And so the next thing we'll do is look at the organization of the plan. So it really starts with the values and vision that feeds into the goals and, and the objectives. Then feeds into the strategies and ultimately the actions. And then there will be even another level with task and next steps that would bring us towards implementation. So just looking at the values, the four S's, the three S's essentially was, was, was presented in Shane's book. And then there's also this concept of the fourth S, which is around the system. And what you'll see with that in, the plan is really around the community engagement, the education component, transparency, things of that nature. But obviously, supply is really about trying to, to offset demand. Stability is really relate, revolves around ownership and, and how important that is to have as members of the community to feel like they're in stable neighborhoods, stable housing. Subsidy is really those, the, the vulnerable populations, making sure that we're taking care of everyone and everyone has a place to live. And so those are our values, right? So then the values were then what informed our vision statement. And so all, you know, we envision a community where everyone has a safe, stable and affordable place to call home, where people take pride in where they live, where individuals from diverse backgrounds live harmoniously and where a variety of housing options exist to meet the full spectrum of community needs. I think we've got, you know, a lot of consensus and buy-in to that being a, a vision statement, but obviously all of this is open to feedback from you, from y'all. So that's really the foundation that led into some goals. And, and we'll get into the objectives as well. First, I want to talk about, we, 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 in referencing, in our goals, we reference category one, category two, category three and category four housing. So when we're talking about essentially permanently affordable housing, subsidized housing, those targeted goals are category three, so 80% AMI and down. But you can see the, the way that we've broken out those different targeted area median income groups. And so you'll see that terminology used in the plan. And so looking at the goals here, goal number one, the city will grow its percentage of households to 18% of Henderson County's total households over the next five years. So what, what of Henderson County, of the total population or the total number of households, how many of those are going to be in, in Hendersonville? And so we want to grow that number. I want to say it's like 15% ish right now. And it has always, it has grown continually over time, but we are the economic center, the, you know, the county seat. And from that, so some of this gets into growth management, community character, some of those other areas that you guys are familiar with, but really it's about locating growth that's occurring in the county, in the city. And so putting a number on that, 3,047 units over the next five years. And so that's a measurable goal that we can, that we can go after. And that was derived from DFI's assessment that we needed 10,000 units over the next five years. And that was, and you subtract out the number of units that are currently under construction countywide. That brings us down to 4,300 countywide. And then you take the percentage that we would need to get to 18% of the city of Hendersonville representing 18% of the county, that gets us to the 3047. So that's supply. And that, that is, that's, that's the value that's tied to. Goal number two is really tied to subsidy. And so that is where we're specifically looking at the number of units that are for 80% AMI and under. So category one, two and three households over the next five years, 2,200 units. Then really straddling subsidy and stability, we have goal number three, which is that 45% of goal number two, of the 2,200 is owner occupied housing units. And so why 45%? 45% is the percentage of owner occupied units that are in the city as of 2023. So A, that is about stability. So we want to make sure that of the units that we are providing for those in, who, who need it, the affordable housing, subsidized housing, that, that is, comes in the form of a, a, a type of unit that has that stability, that stability value tied to it as well. But then also in terms of growth, growth management and character, community character, maintaining the percentages of owner occupied and rental continues to carry that existing characteristic that, that the, that the city has. If you look at owner occupied percentage in the county, it's much higher. So we're really looking specifically at the city. And if we, you know, we grow, you know, too, too many, um, you know, owner occupied subdivisions is all, only thing that we're approving is getting built, then we're gonna change that character. You know, inversely, if it's only apartment buildings, so we've got a, we've got a, we want to maintain a balance. Um, and then number four is also tied to supply, supply and a, a, another uh way of monitoring um, uh, a, in a statistical way, how well we're doing in making sure that we're accommodating supply is with the vacancy rate and those rates are, are different depending on your rental housing and your for sale housing. And then with five, it gets into that system goal of making sure that we are incorporating transparency and education and feedback through, through the whole process. And that goal was really derived out of, we, we had these objectives and strategies related to that topic. And uh, we'll get into, and, and some of you are aware, like how we went through and kind of scored all these and prioritized them. Uh, but we were finding that there was, there was a really low score for, for those types of activities. And so we realized that, hey, that's because we haven't stated this as a goal and it actually even led to us adding the fourth S. And so we kind of worked backwards on that, but uh, we think that's, that's, that's a good part of the process is that we were evaluating these things and, and uh, and tweaking this plan as we went forward. Um, the objectives, I'm not gonna go through and read each of these, um, this is all available in your packet. But this is really high level, we need to do these things. If we, if those are our goals, these are the things we need to do to achieve them. And it breaks it down into a little bit smaller components and we think these represent the values uh that city council has put forth. Think it represents the values and the desires we heard from the community, through the community engagement process. Um, I will just highlight that the first goal had some really clunky language attached to it initially before it went to, um, before this draft went to the strategic housing committee, uh, related to um to where, uh, and, and some of the goals related to um, to locating housing closer into the city core so that we're also um, not uh providing housing further away from jobs and school and, and where, where people have to then uh absorb higher transportation cost to get somewhere if they live further out, right? And so there's a relationship between transportation and housing, but it, it was, it was too much in that goal. So, we've added a, um, an objective here and as well as an action later on um, that points to all the work we did with, with Gen H as it relates to the future land use map, where we want to see growth occur, that type of thing. So we're also building in alignment across our plans, our adopted plans. Uh, so getting into the strategies and actions, I'm just gonna highlight the 10 strategies, uh, which are essentially um categories for our actions. And all of this is, was in the um, was in the, what was provided in your packet. The other component that's in your packet, if you want to follow along, um, that is the, a brief description of each of the actions. Um, so I'm not gonna go through each action. I'm not gonna go through each description. You also had the video that kind of breaks that down, but then also how they got prioritized, short, medium or long term. I'll talk a little bit more about that at the end, but just if, as you're following along, um, you can see where each of these um got prioritized. So the first uh strategy uh related to developing long-term organizational structure to support permanently affordable housing. Second strategy and all the actions under it relate to the education and communication strategies um and, and engaging with the public. And uh, some of the, you know, replicating some of the things that we did successfully early on. The third one, I will take a little bit of time on this one, cause um, I want to highlight some of the things you've already started doing, but zoning and subdivision amendments. Obviously y'all know this is uh in my wheelhouse. Uh, so I did want to highlight the, the work that was done earlier this year as it related to uh the adjustments that were made for to increase, you know, what I call gentle density and missing middle housing into our existing residential areas. And that was done through uh all these types of changes, the backyard lots, the small lots, the reduction of setbacks, the allowances for duplex, triplex, quadplex, uh, larger ADUs, the double density um standard for our minor PRDs, all those things. Um, um, are, are, are things that we've already started, you have already started doing and introduced. I will just note quickly that those, we haven't seen an influx of folks taking advantage of that and so we are, um, you, we did some housing videos, thanks to our communications team, try and get the word out there. Also are going to present to the, the realtors uh next week and uh trying to take the show on the road. There's been an idea, we've been getting some feedback about, um, you know, how challenging it is, how many moving parts there are to actually, you know, doing some of these, like creating the backyard lots. So we're, uh, we've been talking about creating a how-to guide to make it even easier. So if you're not a developer, you're not a planner, you're not someone who's super familiar with that. We, we, we want to get, you know, information from utilities and kind of break it down and the finance, you know, some, some bankers and kind of get, get some information pulled together for people to understand that, you know, what appraisals you may, you may have to do to get a loan and, and so on and so forth. So, just wanted you to know, we're still working on that to try and make it even easier. I thought you might be interested in that, so. Uh, the next strategy is to continue to improve city policies and processes. So that's even beyond the zoning and subdivision ordinance, other policies in other departments and also um our processes. Are we um doing things efficiently and effectively for those, for those um who, and, and how does that impact housing? Um, and this, this falls in that same, that same description, looking at those, those other ordinances. Um, number six is to build the internal capacity of the city to provide and support housing solutions. And you can see some of the actions related there. Seven is to perform community character mapping for different communities within the city. Um, I'll just highlight that this aligns with a project that is in the comprehensive plan. Um, that, you know, I don't think we, that wasn't intentional. Um, but, um, you know, one of the really good ideas that came out of feedback that was heard through the Gen H plan became, got, you know, was, was included in that plan. And then this was an idea um that came through this um process as well. And so, that alignment between plans, I think is really important. And so we're, we're able, as we achieve some of these things, we're, we're achieving the goals in multiple um city plans. Uh, increasing the funding capacity, this is foundational to really achieving a lot. So, um, this was a big one, this one scored very highly when we were prioritizing these. Uh, implementing individual assistance programs for households 80% and uh below. And so, um, those are, those are really specific to um those vulnerable populations. Then leveraging public and private partnerships, heard a lot about partnerships this evening. Um, and so this one uh falls in line with that as well. So the prioritization, I've referenced this, we took all of these actions and we, we created a factors or criteria uh that we would uh look, look at each of these and say, okay, what is the impact of this? How much is it gonna cost? How long will it take for us to do it? What, um, who is it gonna impact? Um, what is the, what are the chances that we can actually pull this off? And we assigned points to each of those, um, each of the actions as it related to each of those criteria. And that gave us a, a baseline score that we could be like, okay, well, these, you know, we should really look at these, these top scoring items and see, um, maybe those are, should be the ones that we really aim to target first uh because they will have a more immediate impact or they're lower cost, we can do it in-house, things of that nature. So that was the starting point um for uh helping us try to prioritize these. Staff then took those and went, and um, went ahead and put them into uh what we've been calling buckets, uh, short-term, uh midterm and long-term buckets and took that to the strategic housing committee. That committee then made adjustments to those prioritization and that is what is in the handout that's been given to you. So, uh, we want to hear from you if there are a change to those priorities, priorities. Are there additional actions that you would like to see? Would you like to modify some of the objectives or strategies, um, phrasing? Would you like to modify the actions? Any of that type of feedback we're uh hoping to receive. We also have a goal of, of, of getting this across the finish line, getting it done, making sure that we can utilize this plan to uh write additional grants and get uh funding to give us the leverage we need to start implementation, things of that nature. So, um, we are looking to bring those, uh, so we would need that feedback relatively quickly to be able to um bring that back to you. The, the goal is to bring this in a draft form, uh, for adoption, a final draft in December. Um, where, what will we do once we have it? Well, it's actually already been built out into Achieve It. You're all familiar with Achieve It. I um, am, I, I absolutely love this, this software and, and what it does. For somebody like that, that's in my position to be able to kind of keep you on track and to have a way uh to, to, to evaluate how well you're doing, to keep the folks that you depend on, uh, uh, you know, aware of, of, of some of these items to be able to uh translate that information to you all as decision makers, very valuable tool. So, um, I'm glad we've invested in this and it's already built out. We haven't activated it yet, cause it's not adopted yet. But wanted you to know that that will be in there. We will be able to provide you with a dashboard similar, this is a screenshot of the strategic plan. All the little um metrics at the bottom would be related to the, the strategies um and objectives and goals that are in this plan. Uh, so you could see how we were doing uh as we moved forward with it. The other thing we've been talking about internally, this is our current housing dashboard, but we have a goal, uh, or we've already been discussing how we would modify this to reflect the information that we will be um targeting and tracking as part of the strategic housing plan. So a complete reworking, but similar in that you would be able to go to a dashboard and see um how well we're doing as it relates to supply. How well are we doing as it relates to subsidy? And even not just project-based data, but market data. So things like the um, um, median home value, right? That's, that's not just based on projects that city council has approved. Um, it's based on a number of factors, but keeping an eye on that and understanding uh where things are as it relates to um the past, you know, or, or when some of these actions were taken and what's, and how that's changing over time would be important. So, uh, we want to be able to present all that information uh to reflect um back towards the efforts that have been made related to housing. We know this is a big priority, so we want to have that tool available. Um, and with that, that's it. Uh, any, I'll, I'll open it up to any questions. I will just note, one other question I have for, for council is, um, we have, I mentioned this earlier, but adding additional next steps. So each of those actions, you know, there's three to eight under each strategy. The top uh priorities, Angie, do you remember how many we put in the short-term bucket? Maybe 15 or, there's 48 total, maybe 20? I know, there's a good number that ended up in the top bucket. Maybe we take those and we assign.
Those of them are in the top. But I don't know the exact number.
Yeah, so for, yeah, we'll just call it 20. And we, 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 we identify the next, you know, the, the, the four next steps that would need to be taken to get those top priority things done. And that would be a implementation and a work plan. Um, so that needs to be done. That hasn't been done yet. If we want to um stay on course for December adoption, we think that would be an addendum that would come later. So that is a question. Do you want to, is it the desire of council to adopt something um that compiles all the information that was presented today and adopt that in December? Um, and then staff comes back early 2026 with an addendum that itemizes the specific action plan. You may recall with the Gen H plan, we adopted it at the same time, but there was a separate short-term implementation plan. And so, and it had more detail than what was in the, um, the main chapters of the plan itself. So, similar to that, um, so, or would you rather us put a whole package together and bring that to you in January, February?
I have a recommendation.
Please.
We would like to bring the plan in December so that council can celebrate it. You've worked hard on it for a number of years, we got delayed um because of Helene. Um, I know Angie would like to, I mean, just, it's been a lot of hard work and celebrate with the strategic housing committee and then bring the implementation plan, um, because I think there's some things we can get started on, um, even as we develop. Um, and then we're also gonna want to pretty it up a little bit, right? And make it a, a very full, but um, let's keep going. So it would be my recommendation is that we bring it to your December meeting, let you adopt it and then we'll work on the implementation plan and a nice final document that can be on our tables and used to move us forward. That seem fair? Angie, you okay with that plan?
I'm fine with it. Yes, thank you.
Any other questions or comments or um things that you would like to see modified?
And when do you want our feedback by, if we have additional feedback? Not saying I'm gonna have additional feedback, I'm just asking if I did, when did you want it by?
With two weeks from now, Matt.
Two weeks.
At your city council meeting on November the 6th.
Yep.
Um, bring it, you know, not that we'll talk about it at the meeting, but if you would have it backed, you know, when you come that night, if you have additional comments that we can share and.
I would even accept it the next day.
I mean, that's more time than I thought you were gonna give me, so like, I'm floored. I thought you were gonna be like Friday.
That's a lot of, that's a hard deadline on council night, so.
I know my people.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
The committee and staff and all the work.
Lot of good work, thank you.
Good job.
Anything someone wants to bring up?
Excellent.